Okay. Joanne, you'll be taking role call for us.
Yes.
Okay, great.
We are on. Ma'am, your meeting.
Good morning.
I'm sorry, Jen said that she doesn't seem to have a link. Ed.
She doesn't have a link?
It's in the meeting, it's in the meeting invitation that Ed sent out yesterday morning.
Give me two seconds and I will resend one out to her.
I'll let her know.
Yeah, it's in the calendar also. Well, no, that's for the public.
Alright, I just sent her another one.
Hello.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, Ed, we're ready.
Okay. It's your, it's your meeting, ma'am.
Thank you. This meeting will now come to order of the Coventry Town Council, the time is ten oh four. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call.
Kimberly Shockley.
Here.
Jennifer Ludwig.
Here.
Jamie LeBlanc.
Here.
Ann Dixon.
Yeah, thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. LeBlanc, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. A warm welcome to the public, the staff from Coventry, the town of Coventry, and Mr. Wazika, our interim town manager. I would like to introduce the people who are on the tiles that you may see. We have with us Ms. Monique Cool, which is with the sewer assessment program, Mr. Kevin McKee, DPW Director, Mr. Glenn Skirka, Chairperson of the Sewer Subcommittee, and Ms. Lisa Mills, Finance Director. Mr. Wazika, how many people do we have on the call with us today?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, excellent. Members of the public, welcome. The public is encouraged to ask questions. Mr. Wazika will present on the following, the history of the Coventry Sewer Program, prior and current problems with the sewer program. He's going to review the Auditor General's Sewer Program Report, which was released March twenty nineteen. He's going to make comments about moving forward, the future of the Sewer Enterprise Fund and program. The public is encouraged to ask questions as the presentation is being made and time is allotted for public comment at the end of the meeting. The council will not take any action this morning or conduct any votes. At a future meeting, the council will review the feedback from today's meeting and determine a course of action. This meeting, as mentioned, is educational and informational. We want to focus on comments from the members of the public. May I have a motion from a member of the council to allow questions from the public as a presentation is being made?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Members of the public, please feel free to raise your hand so that Mr. Wazika may recognize you. When you are recognized, please give your name and your address and we'll move forward. Mr. Wazika, we're anxious to hear your presentation, good morning.
Good morning, ma'am, thank you. You're probably more anxious than I was about trying to do this and put everything together. Alright, I've been looking at this for a while and obviously we're all well aware of our issues that we've got with our sewer system, where it's going. Before I get started on all of that, though, the council and the town and the citizens have to make a decision because what we do moving forward and how much work and things we do to make changes really depends on what the goal of the town is with the Sewer Enterprise Fund. We've got three options with the fund. We can, we can sit on it where it is and let any new customers come in on that lines are already in the ground and not put a shovel in and just work from there. It's only natural expansion from new development that goes on. And there is some, some, some going on and there will be some over the, over the next couple of years, more than likely a substantial number of new properties coming in into the system. The problem with that is the users are limited, the costs are shared by fewer people and the expenses keep going up and up with equipment that needs to be replaced at times, facilities that need to be upgraded, maintained, those costs are just going to continue. Second option is council makes a decision to move forward and begin re-engaging with the Sewer Enterprise Fund and start looking at and putting new pipe in the ground, expanding it out, bringing new users on, making decisions on where, where the best place is to go with it. Personally, the industrial area going down Tyogue is what I would consider the absolute priority as well as the, the Briar Point area where we've got a dry line, we've got substantial capacity over there, we're waiting to do a, we need to do a sewer substation to be able to engage that, there's a lot of desire by the residents in that area to get sewers online because of the conditions that, that they're dealing with. So that's option two. Probably one of the better options. Option three, try to either get this whole system put together with West Warwick and become a regionalized system like the Narrow Bay Commission is, or sell the system outright to either, either West Warwick or some other entity and, and get out of the business completely. Those are the three options. The third option is not going to do anything to assist the people that are already on the system. The costs are going to still be there, they're going to, could possibly even be even higher. I just want to make, make a point, if anybody in the audience has a question they want to ask, please just raise your hand and I will bring you in. Alright, so let me start with a short history of the sewer fund. Okay. So the history of the existing sewers. The process actually began in about nineteen sixty-six, they did a study or they conducted a study on, on the need for, for sewers in the town. As you can see, it took till the eighties till we actually finally started making moves and doing something. The first areas that were put on, New London Turnpike, Broad Street, Woodland Manor, the Arnold Road Pumping Station, North, North Road Terrace Sewers, North Branch Interceptor for Victor Electric, Hopkins Hill Sewers. All of those were put on back in the, in the eighties, early nineties. You had Contract three dash one and three dash two, which was Ty O'Gav in the Washington Street area. Sandy Bottom Road Pumping Station was built back then. Had Hopkins Hill Road, Ty O'g Avenue, Anthony Street, Fairview, Ramblewood Estates, all those were back in oh seven. Oh eight, we had Main Street, Boston Street Areas. You also had Johnson's Boulevard going in, in oh eight. Jump ahead to twelve, we had Lakeside Drive Area, fourteen, the Industrial Drive Area, and then sixteen, seventeen, which is not on this list because it wasn't on this slide that I stole from Western and Sampson on one of their reports, was Nor- Northern Arnold Road, Southern Arnold Road, and no one will ever forget Hazard Street, which started the whole problem, and that was also back in seventeen. So that's a brief, quick, high altitude overview of, of the construction that's taken place. The town has attempted twice, excuse me, three times for bonds involving to go out to a townwide bonding for, for sewers. They had a vote on August nineteenth in seventy-one, they were looking for a seven million dollar bond for the installation of sewers, that failed. June second in eighty-seven, they went back out, this time they'd already begun the process, they went out for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar construction for dry line on Hopkins Hill Road until that was connected in. That surprisingly passed. And then back in January fourteenth of ninety-four, another attempt was made at a townwide referendum for eight million dollars this time, and that one also failed. So those are the three all townwide referendums that were put out on sewers. All of the other bonding has all been done through the legalese of the Sewer Enterprise Fund and what was done there. Jamie, Mr. LeBlanc, you have a question?
Just a clarification, you, you mentioned Hazard Street started the problem?
No, no.
I just wanted to clarify.
I apologize, I did not, no, started the inquiry, shouldn't say problem, inquire, if I, if I misspoke, I apologize.
Because the residents did get the auditor general involved.
Right.
Here.
I have to not.
And this is why we have the recommendations that we have, so just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, poor choice of words, I apologize.
Thank you, Jamie. Mr. Wazika was so excited about this program that occasionally he might use an incorrect word, but you know what he really means, but good to clarify, thank you.
As long as I don't use any real incorrect words today, I'll be doing good.
Yes, we know what they are.
Alright, so I'm going to go through as far as some of the ordinances and what the changes in the rates, the assessment rates, as well as the, the usage rates. So back in ninety-seven, there was an ordinance ninety-seven dash zero two zero four, it was signed on one thirty-one ninety-six by James Kylie, and it was adopted on that same day. And that set a, an assessment rate of thirty-five hundred dollars per unit, seventeen fifty per mobile home, and thirty dollars per thousand evaluation on the commercial side. Those numbers were not chosen based, or not developed based on the cost of the project. It was simply a number that they came, came up with. So it didn't, it didn't meet the need of actually paying for the construction of those projects at the time. Second ordinance was oh, oh four dash zero two three five, and that was signed on two eighteen oh three, and it was adopted on three twenty-four oh three. And what that did is it, it readjusted that thirty-five hundred dollars up to forty-two hundred dollars per housing unit, twenty-one hundred by mobile home, and thirty-five dollars per thousand on the commercial value. Again, not based on actual construction cost, simply a number that was chosen and, and utilized. Third time, back in two four, yeah, just screw up on that, that's oh nine. Ordinance number oh four dash zero two three nine, that was signed on four one oh four and adopted on four twenty-six oh four, Mr. William Hall was the one who signed that. And that's when they moved up the cost on the assessment to sixty-six hundred dollars per housing unit, thirty-three hundred per mobile home, fifty-five dollars per hundred thousand on valuation commercial. They also added the sewer use fees as well. For Coventry, at the time, it was thirty-four cents a hundred cubic foot and ninety cents per cubic foot for the cap, capital replacement and debt service. So that was the user fees. Again, sixty-six hundred dollars, no basis on actual cost, these were numbers that were just used. These are some of the biggest problems that we faced with, with the program, that these numbers were not meeting the need of, of the actual cost for the program. In oh seven, they increased the sewer use fee and combined both fees into a single number and they came up with a dollar fifty-five, a hundred cubic feet. Some of these earlier usage fees were based on, on studies that were, were conducted and based on, on the cost of doing business, some of them weren't, that's one of the, another issue. A lot of this was done without any concern for actually paying off the debt and the, the cost of, of the program. In oh nine, there was another new ordinance that was signed and that put a, a a price tag of twelve thousand nine hundred dollars per house, sixty-six hundred dollars per mobile home, and sixty dollars per thousand on the commercial side, plus CPI, so that would ra- rise as needed. This also superseded all of the other ordinances and, and everything, all the others basically went away. There was an amendment to this ordinance back in thirteen that reduced the interest rate down to six percent maximum cap on the, on the assessments. Prior to that, Mo, what was the, what was the cost prior to that, do you know? The interest rate?
I believe it was eight percent.
Yes, it was eight percent, couldn't find my mute.
Okay, thanks, thanks, God. And jump in, gentlemen and ladies, jump in at any time if there's something that I'm, I'm missing. I'm, I'm just concerned, I don't want to misstate anything, so if I'm making something, please correct me. Okay, in ten, we took over billing for West Warwick and we added their charge of four dollars into the usage fees. In thirteen, we increased the sewer use rate to two eighty-three. In fourteen, it increased to three forty and West Warwick went up to four fifteen. That in fact was the last time, up until last year, that we made a change in the usage fee. That fee alone was not, was not based on the recommended, the recommended use rate to meet the need. Glenn, you were, you were on the board at that time, correct?
Correct.
And the council, council in the past decided not to increase it to where it needed to go to. And they had stopped, and from that point on, no additional rate increases were authorized for nearly seven years. Again, all part of the issue with developing the deficit in this program and why the program has the issues that it has. Alright. So, twenty fifteen, new ordinance was passed and that, and for the first time, the construction costs were taken into account for setting up the, the assessments on the, on the properties on any of the, on any of the contracts being done. They also added a betterment clause to it. Mo, do you want to explain that a little bit? Or Glenn, one of you?
I can explain that. So, the betterment assessment is, is based on two things. One, contractors who are building sewer infrastructure that gets turned over to the town. So for instance, new subdivisions that are developed where the road that is built within the subdivision becomes a town road and the infrastructure in that road becomes town property. So contractors build the sewer infrastructure at, at their expense, they turn it over to the town, and then their betterment assessment applies to them where they pay a reduced assessment because they paid for the infrastructure. The second scenario for betterment assessments is properties that have already been assessed and they have a change of use after they've been assessed. They, there's no new construction required. It's just a change of use that has either increase in flow or possibly a decrease in flow, but whatever the change is, the change is assessed at the increased amount from what they were previously assessed and a betterment assessment applies to them too because there is no new infrastructure required on the town's behalf.
Alright, thank you. We have a, we have a a participant who would like, who's got a question, I'm going to bring, I'm going to bring him in so he can ask. Eric, please state your name if you, if you can to, you don't have to in this case, but if you would, that'd be great. Your address and what's your question? Eric, can you hear me? You're still on mute.
Is that better?
There we go, sir.
Alright, it's Eric Wilson, forty-eight Hazard Street. And I was wondering about the standard of that betterment assessment because by my math, the Brady O'Sullivan that was once a mill is now apartments, his betterment assessment reduced his assessment cost over ninety percent. I was wondering how is that like reasonable for the town going forward? I understand giving them a reduced rate, but you know, like you grade it on a curve and you're not taking ninety percent off the cost. You know, I would understand something a lot lower, like ten to twenty percent, but ninety percent, is that what's going to be happening going forward? Because that's not beneficial for the residents there to getting hammered by these assessment fees.
Mo, you were around when, when that took place, Glenn as well. Do you know how that number was reduced to that point? Because I haven't been able to find documentation on why it went to the number, the rate that it did go on that property.
Yeah, I can answer that. So Eric, the, the Anthony Mill, that was an agreement made with the town council on what their assessment was. And their assessment predated the betterment assessment and the ordinance that included the betterment assessment. So they weren't subject to a betterment assessment, they made an arrangement directly with the town council for the assessment that they have.
So they made a backroom deal?
I don't know if it was a backroom, side room, whatever it was, but I think it was some, it was part of a development agreement that was, that was started with the town council and the planning stages of actually converting that mill into what it is now.
Alright, just for example of the mismanagement from the past.
Mo, do you have?
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just really hoping that's, you know, mismanagement like that is not what continues in this town.
That's, that's exactly what we're trying to eliminate and why we're, we're, we are trying to move this forward, fix the problems. The problem is, we can't change what, what happened in the past. Any of the, any of the mistakes, any of the issues that occurred, they, they happened, it's been prior councils, prior town managers, there's, there's enough to go around all over the place on what's, what hap- what's happened in the past. We only can move it forward and, but, and, and look to the future to fix those issues and prevent them from happening again, and that's what we're attempting to do now.
Alright, good, that's what I want to hear.
No, that's what we're, that's what we've been doing. Thanks, Eric, I appreciate your, your question.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Alright. So now, back in twenty twenty, we, 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 sorry, get my train of thought here. We engaged the company called Rat- Raffcallis to do a, develop a professional analysis program and system that allows us to actually develop the cost and the rates that are necessary to fund the system, fund the usage and meet our, our statutory requirement of, we have to collect one point two five per- times what our, what our cost are for the bonds, for the bonds that we've got out on these projects. So with that and with the development, we ended up with an increased rate of five ten for the town and West Warwick with a rate of four ninety-eight that goes back to them. This was a overall on the town side, almost a fifty, about, about fifty percent increase in the town's rate. Overall, it was somewhere in the, in the forty percent mark on the overall rate increase. We also set the assessments for the Arnold Road as well as Hazard Street, Arnold Road North and Hazard Street on those assessments and they were issued. So everything is, all assessments are out, the rates been stabilized. We've got a, a program now that allows us to to have a, have a handle on what's going on, we can project out for five years, ten years down the road on where we are and what's going on. So that's a brief history of getting to this point. I'm noticing we've got some more questions. Frank, please state your name and go with your question, sir.
Uh, yeah, it's Frank, on Arnold Road. Why are the residents responsible for paying for these assessments? And why isn't it taken out of like a general fund that we pay our property taxes in? Like why, why are the residents responsible for what goes in front of their house? I don't feel like we really had a vote or a say on the sewers when number one, I don't use the sewer, and number two, I don't plan on hooking up to the sewer anytime soon. Why wasn't like a town general fund paying for any of this?
It was, it was actually set up as an enterprise fund. So it's, it's, the cost for it are shared by the, the residents that are utilizing it, can utilize it, someday will be utilizing it. So it's set up to be separate and apart from the general fund. The two are not supposed to meet, they're not supposed to touch each other and even though it's, it's a town program, it's not part of the town's general fund. Though there is, right now, there are, we have about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year that goes to make, pay the bonds on the West Warwick Treatment Plant. And out of that six hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred thousand of that is being paid by the general fund. We were hoping to move more of that. That's the only amount of money that our bonding, our, our finance advisors and bonding agencies have said that we could actually pay from general fund based on the way that the Sewer Enterprise Fund is structured. So it cannot come out of town general, general funds, it has to come out of the enterprise fund except for that, that amount that's going towards West Warwick to pay for the, the improvements in the plant and that the town is effectively twenty-five percent responsible for on all of those costs.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh, that's it right now.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming and watching today.
Thank you.
Eric, you've got another question?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, you've mentioned the assessments going out. And the other day I was doing some digging and I noticed that what I was told was mandatory, it doesn't seem to be because twenty-seven Hazard Street, they did not receive an assessment. And I did some quick math and it looks like the assessments for all the other residents are going to raise like three grand, something like that because that one home was not tied in or does not have an assessment for whatever reason. I was wondering, how is that possible?
It doesn't have an assessment because it doesn't have a connection point in front of its house.
And no one had, no one had a connection in front of their house until the sewer came. So how, was that, was that house invisible at the time? It's not new.
Nope, that house was apparently set to go off of, I believe it's Knight Street, that it, the side of the house, it's on the corner of Knight and Hazard. And that one was going to be connected up on Knight and not on Hazard Street itself. Why and how that decision was made, I don't know, we've looked, we've looked into it. Mr. LeBlanc has brought this, this topic up. Where we've, we've done research on it and we have no idea how or why that's, that's come up. Glenn, do you have any input on this one or Mo?
I don't know exactly which property you're talking about, but typically when you have a sewer infrastructure going in, in the neighborhood, our consultants figure out where the connection point is, whether the existing cesspool or the existing plumbing maybe on one side of the house and they try to get it as close as possible. If the contractors either hit an obstacle, whether it was a water main conflict or some kind of other conflict, they would have tried to divert it to a different location. If that other location was never constructed, then that's why they wouldn't receive an assessment. But as long as the contractors would have put a, a lateral in for them to tie in somewhere along their property, they would have received an assessment.
So like an obstacle, like something in the way?
Yeah, it could have been a water main or a water valve or, or something.
What about ledge?
Or ledge, something.
Yeah.
I believe they were, they had a plan to, to hammer out ledge, so I don't think the ledge was the obstacle.
Oh, ledge was an obstacle because we heard it for, I don't know, four, five months.
Mister, Mister Wilson, did you find any other properties or were you focused on that street?
Uh, I, I can do more digging, but it was just local for the time.
Okay, thanks.
I don't.
Do all the people on corners like that get options? I mean, I'm not one, but I just figured that'd be good to know.
Eric, I, again, I've looked at others, try to see if we can find some others like that. How, why, I don't know, I can't give you an answer. The decision was made by, with Western and Sampson, the town's engineer. It just, it just was, uh, again, the thought was Knight Street was going to be done right after Hazard Street. So it was allowed to go on the, apparently from what I understand, the connection in the back would, would have been a more a, a better location to, to connect in if they come in on Knight Street instead of Hazard Street. But why, and again, because this project's been stopped, nothing's going on and that's why he hasn't received. We cannot assess someone that doesn't have the ability to connect in and I can't give you, I can't give you any more of an answer than that, unfortunately.
But while we're on the, uh, while we're on the topic of assessments though, is there any plans still of notifying residents? Well ahead of time of, of the assessment fees because, I mean, I was. I had no idea there's a gentleman, at least one on this call that has no idea what an assessment fee is. I didn't know what it was. And, uh, you know, people just getting blindsided still to this day by assessment fees. Especially since they're, you know. We're talking high twenty thousand dollar range. I was wondering if there still was a plan because I've heard talk, but I haven't seen any action, at least on my end.
Well, there's, there's. Eric, there's been no action on that because the sewer, the sewer fund is basically, I mean, it's, there's no development going on, there's no construction going on. So yes, moving forward, the mistakes that were made in the past are gonna be corrected. That's what this is all about. This is why we're trying to have a program like this. Engage the council, let them know where the issues are. This is a new council, new members. Mister LeBlanc was involved in a lot of the research and a lot of the effort to, uh, uncover. This, uh, the issues that were, were taking place or had taken place. So we're, we're moving forward. These are the things that we, we are going to correct and, and make sure they don't happen again. How, how?
All right, I, I was just, I was just looking for like clarification though, like, you know. No later than six months out, you know, residents will be notified of an assessment. And like, maybe, you know, they should be given at least like an example, like, you know. You know, this house and this, not this house, but like this street, the average assessment. You know, it's gonna be similar to yours based on, you know, geological surveys and their assessment fee was fifteen thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, something like that.
So is it, if I may?
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, page six out of forty-nine of the auditor general, auditor general's report. Actually, uh, number ten of, uh, his recommendations, uh, out of eighteen. He actually does state that he believed that notification of effect that, uh, of affected homeowners. Uh, they should be notified two years in advance. And I one hundred percent back that recommendation because this is such a significant financial hardship for many, many people. That I, I absolutely believe that, um, the town council and, uh, the sewer subcommittee should consider at least two years of, uh, advance note. But it's a great question. Wilson.
Yep. Thank you, Eric. Anything further?
That's it, thanks.
Thank you.
I have my hand up.
Okay, um, Mo's also got hers up and she beat you.
That's fine.
You have something you wanna, you wanna ask or, or add?
No, actually I just can't figure out how to get my hand down.
All right, I will, uh, I will get it down for you. All right, Dr. Dixon?
Uh, thank you. One of the points I want to make is that the recommendation report was developed in or released in March two thousand nineteen. And it is a list of recommendations. The council, once it makes a decision, what is the future of the program? Will then review all documentation, including codes, ordinances, et cetera. And determine what is the appropriate notification time and all other aspects relating to the sewer program. So right now, we, we're not ready to say what needs to be changed, what has to be changed, what the change should be. We have to do a very careful deliberation and that comes after we give a lot of research, get a lot more information. And then we determine, it might actually be three years notification, not just two years notification. I don't know what the appropriate time will be and we're gonna be really starting from scratch, looking at, looking at the program, determining its future. And then reviewing, as I said, all documentation that currently exists and determine what is the right course of action. So yes, there were some recommendations. They're already three years old. We need to move forward and we need to determine what is the appropriate course of action. And I want you, uh, taxpayers, all the members of the community to understand that we are dedicated as a council to making appropriate. Timely decisions.
Glenn, what's the typical timeframe from the decision being made to? Go into a particular neighborhood, designing it all and actually getting the shovels in the ground to start the process? What's that timeframe usually?
Uh, from, from, I guess in conception, it would be about two years. Because you have, uh, approximately eight months to a year of a, of a design process and then. Uh, formalization of it. Uh, by the time it goes out for bid and then actually starts construction, that duration is roughly two years.
So it should be right in line with, if we, if we ultimately utilize the, uh, the order of general's recommendation. The, at the beginning of the process, people should be notified at that point on what the potential assessment could be.
I think, um, if you're gonna notify people, you should notify them in, in sequence. Two years would be like a, um, like a preliminary notification because. Um, at the two-year point, we are not. We do not have any confirmation that anything will happen two years from now. So at the two-year point, we're guessing something may happen. So you could get feedback, you could get input, um. But it's not till about, um, six months. Before construction would begin that we would know something is definitely gonna happen. Because of the, uh, the funding, the financing, all the design, everything being complete. And having the ability to move forward. So yes, you could, you could spend two years notifying people, getting their input. Um, but at two years, it's just a plan at that point. It is not, nothing confirmed.
All right, thank you, sir. I've got Mary on the line. I've gotta promote her to a panelist. She's using an older version of Zoom. Give me one second, please. Mary, welcome to, uh, the meeting. Please state your name.
Hi, just have a question. Are you guys forcing tie-in? Are you gonna force people to tie in to a project that's obviously? Not conducive to the town, not. You know, effective, I mean. That's what I'm looking for. It's not profitable to the town, so are you gonna start forcing tie-ins on people on top of their fifty thousand dollar assessments?
To my knowledge, Mary, we have never forced someone. There isn't, there isn't part of the ordinance that requires. A mandatory connection. Mo, wanna jump in on this? I don't believe anyone has ever been forced, anybody's been cited. That, I don't believe that's ever been used. Is that correct?
That is correct. We don't force anybody. It is in the ordinance that we can, but we have never utilized it and have no intention on utilizing it, to my knowledge.
Only because it, it's, it's not gonna be feasible for most people. Especially during COVID and on top of that assessment and on top of property taxes being outrageous and. It's just not fair.
Well, that's why, that's why it's never been enforced, Mary. It's in the ordinance, it's never been used. And, uh, unless a council, a council or.
My other question is why do they continue to go forward with a project that is not? That is putting the town backwards financially instead of bringing the town forward. It's just. And only what, huh, twenty, ten percent of the town's gonna have these sewers that are forced down their throat when. The other parts of town will never see a sewer, so why are they, I feel like, why are they picking on certain people?
That's what this is all about, to make the determination, the council makes the determination on what to do moving forward. This is all part of the process, Mary, on whether or not they take the.
I just feel like they're picking on the people in this, in certain neighborhoods and the people that live, you know. I know, Jamie, I think is affected by the sewer assessment, but I think he's the only one on the council, so you know what I mean? It's like, why? It seems like they're just picking on people. I don't know. It's just how I feel about the town right now.
Thank you. Any, anything further?
No, as long as they're not gonna force me to tie in because I feel like I'm being harassed as it is, so I don't want.
Nope, they will not. Yes, uh, Ms. Ludwig.
Um, hi, Mary. Uh, my name is Jen Ludwig. I'm in council, um, member position in District Two. Um, I did want to mention that, um. Uh, a theme of kind of what, what, um, myself and I think my colleagues here have, have been trying to show. Is that a problem in one area of this town is a problem for all of us. And so, um, on my side, for example, I don't have a sewer running down my street. But I am vested in this process. I do want to hear your concerns. And I wanna make a decision that is good for the town and not just certain parts. So thank you for your comments today. It will be helpful for all of us.
I, you know what I mean? Like I pay my taxes, I pay a lot of taxes. And then, you know, they're gonna build an apartment complex up the street from me, flood my yacht out and then I'm gonna have to pay. Sewer assessment, tie-in, just to have my yacht flooded because they want some rich guy up the street to build apartments that are gonna hurt me. So I feel like it's, everything's just coming together all too much, too much. You know what I mean?
Thank you for your comments, Mary. Okay, next.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Mary, thank you for your comments. Um, if perchance you feel that you're being harassed, you need to contact your. Uh, district representative or any one of us to, or the town manager to so indicate. We don't want to feel that our voters and our citizens are being harassed for any particular reason. Um, as you heard, Ms. Hool said that although the ordinance, uh, can. Require a tie-in, we are not requiring any tie-ins at all. Um, so I'm glad that we were able to clarify that, but, uh, none of our voters should be harassed. So please let us know if that's a situation. Thank you.
Frank, you're in. Please state your name.
Uh, Frank. Um. When did you guys send the first notification out for these assessments on Arnold Road? What year was that?
Bo?
Um. That would have been done. Probably when the contract was actually done but not approved yet. I think something went out in like April, but it didn't have dollar amounts. It just said. That there were, that, that the line went down and that assessments were gonna be coming. There were no dollar amounts on it. If I remember.
So there was nothing.
Out that letter.
So there was nothing in like, the year like, uh. Like two thousand sixteen or anything with like plans on possibly doing sewers or anything like that?
That I'm not aware of because that wasn't, I, I send out the bills. I don't send out that letter. That letter would have come from, um. The town manager at the time. And I know he did send, I know they did send out something and, but I know it definitely didn't have dollar amounts on it. I know it just was a basic. The line is gonna go down kind of letter.
Yeah, uh, you wouldn't know what year that was.
I don't.
And. Cause honestly, this is like one of the breaking points for us into wanting to sell and. Really get out of the town. Um, and when I went to go sell. Back in two thousand eighteen. We weren't able to, um, take any offers because we couldn't disclose any information on the sewer assessment. Um, and it took a little while for you guys to come out with any of the numbers. And, uh. The next buyers coming in, are they able to assume the assessment or does it have to be paid off with the? Selling of the house or how does that work?
They assumed that the assessments always go with the property.
So it doesn't need to be paid off? It can be assumed?
No, no, it goes with the property. It does not stay with the, the owner at the time.
What about the, uh, the hookup? Does it need to be hooked up when it's being sold or? Can it still stay on the septic? Cause I mean, my septic's fine and I don't plan on hooking up, but I don't know what the next buyers have to do.
As long as you don't have a cesspool.
No.
Your septic is fine. There's no mandatory hookup.
Okay, and it can be assessed, uh, it can be assumed.
Yes.
Okay. Awesome.
Anything else, sir, or is that it?
That's it right now.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Lisa.
Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted. You are in.
Oh, okay, perfect. I have two questions. One, to follow up what, um, Mary said. You're not mandated to tie into the sewer, but you're mandated to pay that assessment fee that is going in front of your house. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, and my second question goes back to what Eric was talking about on twenty-seven Hazard Street. When we first found out the sewers were coming up Hazard Street, that was a question that was asked if we could go down. If they were on a corner lot, if they could go down the side street, like on Knight Street. Or on Chopman Street because it would be cheaper to go in that way. We were told, no, we had to be tied in, um, the front of the house where the address faced. So. I was curious why this person would have the option to go down Knight Street. Versus being right on Hazard Street where the front of his house was. To make his assessment cheaper if it did go up Knight Street. And now I don't believe they're going up Knight Street. So shouldn't he be charged the assessment?
He, under, under our ordinance, he cannot be charged for the assessment because there is no, he has no ability to connect in there. There wasn't a line put in for him to be able to connect into in front of his house. It was going to go in on, on the Knight Street side, so without that, we cannot charge an assessment on, on his property.
Okay, cause the question was asked to Mister McGee at the time. And it was told that, no, we had to go through the front part of our property. It didn't matter if we were on a corner lot or not. So I don't believe that's fair and there is a house that's on the other corner. So shouldn't she have that option too and not be charged that assessment? Cause she's being charged that assessment and her house is also, the back of her house is on Knight Street.
I wish I had a better answer for, for everybody on this topic. I said Mister LeBlanc brought it up a while ago and, uh, I have not been able to find how or why that was allowed to go on. I mean, it's, it's, it.
Is it a possibility that person who owns Knight Street knows somebody on the town council at the time?
I have no.
Because it's just not fair for that other house is being charged. The sixty thousand dollar assessment when he's not being charged anything. That could bring down the assessments for everybody on Hazard Street.
And, and, and it would, it would have if there, if that house had had a, a connection in front of it. It obviously would have made it a, a, a cost reduction for everybody else because it's shared by, by the entire. As far as the sixty, the sixty is because of the number of bedrooms in that property. That's the only reason that one is, is that number. It's because it's seven bedrooms. So.
Okay, so my next question is, why can't they put the tie-in in front of his house now, that pipe?
Because you'd have to dig up the road, you'd have to, you'd have to cut into the pipe and it would require. An extensive amount of cost to do that and put it in front of him right now.
Okay, I, so going forward. If your house is on a corner lot, can we make it that if the sewer is going up? On the side street of your corner lot and it's closer to your, where you're gonna tie into your sewer, you're able. To go that route instead of the front of your house. Which would cost more for you to tie in.
This is, uh, this is an issue that, that's only come up because of this, this one piece of property. But again, moving forward, these are the kinds of issues we wanna prevent, make sure it doesn't happen again. And that's why we're listening to everybody and we're doing this meeting today to get the input. So the council can make their decision on what they wanna do. Do they wanna move forward? And if they do, then we're gonna go back and we're gonna correct all of these issues so we're not, we don't face them again in the future. I apologize. I know it, I know it's, my answer isn't a good answer. But I don't have, unfortunately, I don't have a, a real good answer on why it or how it happened.
Okay, I'm just talking either, even throughout the town, if somebody is on that corner lot. And say they go down the front of the house, but they're not going up that side street. Then everybody should have that option of saying. I don't want that pipe in front of my house. I'd rather go down that side street, even if they're not going down that side street. Understand what I'm saying?
I, I completely do. It should be all enough. I agree with you completely on that.
Okay, that was my only questions.
Thank you. Mary, you, uh, you have another question? You're on mute.
Yes, I just wanted to, um, thank the two ladies on the panel who actually, like, I feel like they actually listen to me. Because I don't feel like every town meeting I've been to about these apartment complexes and the sewers and everything, I don't feel like I'm being listened to. So I appreciate, I just want them to know that I appreciate them listening and really hearing me. I appreciate that. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Okay, go back. We have a couple more. Uh, give me one second. I will bring. Okay, go back. We have a couple more. Uh, give me one second, I will bring them in. Frank, you have another question?
Yeah, I got, uh, just, just one more question that I was thinking of too. Um, my property requires a pump, I'm sure other people's do. What is the pump for and why? Why do I have to get it? Is it?
Yep, it's, uh, it's because it's, it's not able to be gra- gravity fed, so, uh, Glenn, you wanna explain the pump and the whole process, you'd be, uh, better at that than I am, so.
Sure. Frank, can you tell me what your address is?
One thirty-one Arnold Road.
Okay, so, a portion of the Arnold Lo- Road infrastructure is what they call a force main, and that requires everybody who ties into that force main to have a pump. It's because the infrastructure in the road doesn't have a suitable slope to it, to achieve a typical gravity line. So at some, some point along that road, that force main turns into a gravity line. So everybody along the gravity line typically can tie in by gravity. Everybody along the force main has to utilize a pump to pressurize that force main, because it's going uphill, or it doesn't have enough slope to run by gravity.
Is that per house, or is my house gonna be, have a pump that's gonna pump like, say, the neighbor's house next to me as well?
It's, yeah, your house will pump just your house, your neighbor's house, um, if, if the infrastructure in your road is a force main, then all your neighbors will require their own pumps. And everybody will pump into that force main, and that force main will lead to a gravity main at some point. But yes, well, everybody along that force main is required to have a pump.
Okay, and is, uh, Twin Lakes Ave, are they projected to get sewers anytime soon, or? And that's like the side road that goes to Arnold Road?
Again, Frank, Frank, yep, Frank, at this point, the, there, there is no construction planned, there is no sewer work at all being planned, and that's part of what we're doing with this meeting, for the council to be able to make a decision on, on what we are going to do and what the town's gonna do. So, but right now, there is no plan for any construction to go on at all.
All right, because where my lot is, and where they said the pump is going, and from where they have to run to the backyard, goes completely through my deck, and I asked about that, and they said that the deck would need to be demolished, or moved, or whatever, and I'm liable for putting a new deck back on, on top of everything we're paying for, where if I didn't have to have the sewers running down Arnold Road, my corner lot, if I was able to have it on Twin Lakes Ave, we wouldn't have to demolish anything.
Like I said, at, at this point, we are, we are not planning on any new construction. That'll be up to the council, uh, so we'll see what happens on that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no other, no other hands in the air at this moment. Glenn, is there something you wanna add on the history of, of the system? Anything you wanted, any information you wanna give out, that you're able to give and, uh?
Well, it's interesting to hear. So I have a lot of ideas on how to move forward, I just don't know, um, if the, if the council, um, how they feel about moving forward. So I know some of the biggest issues have been the costs, and the costs are increasing every year, there's no way around it. But the need is also increasing just as much. So a lot of people feel like they don't want sewers, however, we know that there's a lot of neighborhoods that need sewers, and you know, some people feel like the environmental protection part of it doesn't matter to them, um, it matters to us, matters to the entire town. Um, but the biggest problem is the overall cost, and from what I can tell is that the way we do things is, we borrow the money, we put in the infrastructure, we charge the people along that infrastructure to recover the cost of the construction, in addition to the interest that we, uh, incur from borrowing that money. Um, the other problem is, we, we tell everybody that the sewer, the sewer infrastructure, you know, is designed for a lifespan of, you know, fifty, a hundred years, or you know, almost everybody's lifetime, but we recover a hundred percent of the cost over a twenty-year period, then essentially after that assessment is paid, everybody who lives in that property after that, you know, they're the ones getting all the benefit, because they're not paying anything. They've essentially bought a house with sewer infrastructure, and they're just, they're just paying the, uh, the usage fees. So we, we kinda dump the entire infrastructure costs on the person there at the time. And I would like to come up with something at some point where we can spread that cost out over either a larger amount of time, or in an indefinite amount of time, similar to a usage bill. So if we could increase the usage bill and eliminate the assessment, I think that makes things a lot more affordable for people. But the only way to do that is to have the capital upfront to build the sewer infrastructure without borrowing it, without the pressure of having to repay it over a certain amount of time. So, if there's any way to, um, find the funds to do this ahead of time, instead of borrowing it and then building, save it, save those funds up over a two or three-year period, build the infrastructure, recover it over a forty or fifty-year period, or over an indefinite period, similar to, um, a, a monthly payment, then it eliminates that, that huge burden to people, um, of that twenty-year note with interest.
Thank you. Kim, you have your hand up?
Yes, um, so, as I've said to my fellow council members, this is a learning experience for me too, to make sure I have a fuller understanding. And I have a question about people having the sewer line in front of their home, but not tying in. Does it alleviate any of the environmental issues that we're putting these in certain places for? Um, I just, I'm not sure how that works if people don't tie in.
They don't tie in, then no, it's not, it's not alleviating those environmental issues, they still exist. Until they tie in, they will continue to exist.
And yet, they still, there's still all this cost associated for people, but none of the benefit of having the sewer system.
Correct, they have the assessment cost that they are paying, and they're not getting, uh, unless they make that decision to tie in. You're right, they're not getting any benefit out of it.
So can I ask what the logic is of having people pay the assessment but not mandating that they tie in? Is it saving them a lot to not have to tie in?
It, uh, it depends on the situation. It can be, uh, tying in is, uh, a costly expense, and that's usually, you've, you've gotta pay it out all at once to, uh, or take a loan for the contractor to come in and do it. Glenn, do you have a number on what the average would be to do an average tie-in?
Uh, they, they vary widely. It all depends on the current infrastructure of the home. If it's in the front yard, if it's in the backyard, do they require a pump? Do they not require a pump? Are there obstacles to, to maneuver around? How much, uh, landscaping is involved in the yard, whether it's pools and decks? Um, but some of the easy tie-ins, you know, I would say the cheapest one is probably, you know, four or five thousand bucks, where you can have a, a pretty pricey one at twenty thousand.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you for that information, and, uh, I just, I'm sorry, Ed, I have one more question, unless someone.
If you did.
Um, Glenn, you were just talking about coming up with the upfront money, but unless I missed it, and I apologize, did you give an amount that you thought would be necessary?
So ju- based on the past, we've been looking at, um, you know, each sewer project that we have tackled in the past has generally run around a million bucks. So, if there's a way to, say, save up three, four hundred thousand bucks a year over a three, four-year period, then you have that million-dollar capital in, you know, in the bank, where you can spend that on the infrastructure without borrowing. And then, save another, you know, three hundred thousand bucks a year for another few years, you could continue on with the sewer program, with a, um, say, an estimated project every three to four years. And we could have a goal, you know, say twenty years from now, of how many projects we wanna tackle, or how many areas in town that we wanna alleviate. So, um, I don't think we're looking at a significant amount of projects, but we are looking at a significant amount of cost. So, um, if you could, you know, come up with a concept for the next twenty years and estimate a, a project every three to four years, right, so maybe four projects over the next five year, uh, twenty years. I think that's the way to do it.
So, some of our earlier, some of our earlier projects were actually funded through HUD, in the, in the, uh, in the beginning of the, uh, the sewer program. So they, they were not coming out of, uh, out of assessments at that point, like, uh, Auto World Pump Station, that was a HUD, HUD funds that were used on that one. Uh, so there were some, something that we need to look at, if, if there is still money available, we need to do a better job of, of going after those funds, if they are still out there, either state or federal. And it's something we, uh, again, if we move forward, if the program's moving forward, this would all be part of what we need to do, and, uh, and not look at just going after, uh, the homeowners. As, as Glenn said, I like Glenn's ideas on that, it's, uh, spreading it out a little bit further. All right, Jamie, you've got, uh, your hand up, sir?
Uh, I'm telling off of, uh, what Member Shockley said, um, she was asking about the environmental benefits. Um, if we as a council are gonna go and say that we wanna do this project for environmental reasons, for the town's rivers, for the town's ponds and lakes, then it begs the question, why are the homeowners on the individual streets getting selected, being forced to pay for it if it's benefiting the entire town? I just wanted to make that comment, and then to Glenn's suggestion, I, I actually one hundred percent agree, it, we're saying that these sewer lines last fifty to a hundred years, so why are we paying it off at twenty? I completely understand that concept, uh, but it goes back to your earlier comment, uh, Mr. Wazika, that we can't use general funds to pay for the sewer enterprise fund. So if we're gonna save this money, we had to save it within the sewer enterprise fund.
Correct.
But I don't see that happening based off of current numbers. I mean, we still, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, we still have the town hall annex building collateralized because of some of the debt incurred by the sewer enterprise fund, is that correct?
That is correct, so that is nearing completion, but it is still out there.
Okay, thank you.
Chairwoman Dixon, you have a, your hand up?
Yes, I do. Um, Mr. Skirker and I have discussed, um, his recommendations, potential solutions to, uh, funding a sewer program, uh, and they're very interesting. Um, I would like to suggest, however, that we would hold off really spending a lot of time on potential solutions this morning, and go right into the recommendation report and understand what our town has been able to do that's good, and what we still have to do, and I do promise, and I've talked to the council about this, we will have several more sessions relating to the sewer program, the sewer enterprise fund, at which time we can talk about potential solutions for funding, potential solutions ingrained within our changes to our code, et cetera. So I, I would like to suggest that we hold off moving into solutions and debating those issues right now, and we move into the recommendation report. Mr. Wazika?
No, I, I agree. Solutions now, where it's, uh, it's a waste of time actually right now until you, the council makes a decision on what to do. Even though, even some of the, the recommendations, I'm gonna go through the eighteen recommendations from the Order General, some of them are in the same, same situation, until we make a decision, or the council makes a decision, or the town makes a decision to move forward and continue putting, putting shovels into the ground and putting pipe in the ground. A lot of this, we're spinning our wheels and wasting time and effort that can go somewhere else if we're not in fact going to expand the system, other than natural growth, but based on where the pipes are already in. Um, I'll start with the first one, explore if any sewer program costs can or should be supported through the town's general fund. That was recommendation number one, as I've already gone into on that. We currently pay about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year to the West, to West Warwick for, uh, for bonds and repairs on the, on the station. Um, that money has been, they've been, has determined that we can't pay that from the general fund. I began that process two years ago, I'm moving two hundred thousand of that into a line item in the general fund. Uh, unfortunately, last year, where I was hoping to move another two hundred, that's, we failed to get a budget, so that, that money obviously hasn't been in it. If we can move the rest of that four-six, four-sixty, four-seventy over in the general fund, at some point, it will help to take a little bit of the pressure off the, uh, the ratepayers for the, uh, for the sewers. So that is, uh, something that we, we've begun the process, hopefully we can complete and move all of that six-seventy over there. And those numbers will start going down in the next couple of years on what we owe West Warwick, because those bonds in West Warwick, I think they, some of them start coming off in, in twenty-six, twenty-five or twenty-six. Some of those start to, uh, to sunset. Consider offsetting the town sewer assessment liability for connecting town buildings to the sewer system against the general fund advances that are night, not likely reimbursable in the near term. If such offsets are not applied, charge interest to the town sewer assessment payable to the sewer fund. All right, we have actually couple of, back in September, and I believe it was October or November, we actually, our total assessment for town buildings to the sewer, sewer enterprise fund was just slightly more than two million dollars. At the time, we, uh, there was about a three-point-two million dollar in loans to the sewer enterprise fund from the town's general fund. We have since offset that, and it will be reflected in this year's financials, and we paid off those assessments by, by, by bringing down the amount of money that was owed to the town from the enterprise fund. Uh, it is currently listed at about, uh, I've got, I've got the numbers, it's, uh, I believe it's one point two million dollars where we're down to, or thereabouts, that, uh, that the town is now owed. With the increase of the sewer rates, uh, the usage rates, that money will begin getting paid back to the town, the rest of it, uh, the following year, in, in the next fiscal year. We're, we're basing on, on getting some of it back in over the next ten years to do the payout, payback to the town, so that's in there. Build sewer assessments for recently completed sewer work to provide cash flow to meet the needs. All right, these are the Arnold Road and Hazard Street, those have been met. We've got, we've, we've made those assessments and put them out, and, uh, we are collecting. All right, erect a minimum base sewer use charge to be applied one year after the initial sewer assessment, when the actual connection and use has not commenced. So basically, what, what this, this recommendation was, a minimum use fee, which we are looking at, and again, will require an ordinance change, but they're also recommending a, the Order General recommended a minimum use fee for everyone, whether they're connected or not. So that's something, again, that's something that the town council of the future, as well as by utilizing the, uh, sewer, the sewer subcommittee on coming up with changes that are needed to our ordinances. That's, uh, that needs to be done. Revisit negotiated, uh, reserve capacity component of the intermunicipal agreement. We have done that. We have met several times with West Warwick in an attempt to bring those, that capacity level down. They have absolutely no desire to, to buy back or take back any of that capacity. We've met several times. The, there is no, no desire there to do it. The only other option we would have at that point would be to basically end the contract, and we will more than likely not be allowed to be able to connect anyone else to the system, because we will have no additional capacity to do that. So again, that's, is, it's, there's a lot there. It was intended because of when it was purchased, uh, when it was set up, of the sewer program expanding, and that hasn't happened as quickly as, as was anticipated. With this, we have been in negotiations. With this, we have been in negotiations with another community that maybe looking at, is looking at, uh, taking some of our reserve capacity. Because, uh, they've got some projects going on. So there is a possibility of getting rid of some of that. Again, we have to look at and analyze just how much we're willing to give up and what our future needs are. So that, again, if we're moving forward, that has to all be addressed. Reassess.
This, Mr. LeBite has his hand up.
I'm sorry, Jamie.
Only because it's about this, uh, particular recommendation. Um, I just, I think it's important to highlight that the capacity that we currently have is costing this town millions of dollars, you know, and the reason why, Mr. Wazika, as you know, um, when they have to do an upgrade at that treatment plant, we own because we own that capacity. We actually have to pay twenty-five percent of whatever the upgrades is. Well, how much was the last upgrade you? Do you remember how much the last upgrade was? And I think it was in fifteen or I think it was fifteen or sixteen, but.
I think it was twenty-two million, if I'm not mistaken, that that upgrade was.
Somewhere in my point there is I'm, I just wanted to call out that because of this contract. The entire town is essentially a payer on all of that debt. And I just wanted to call that out, that, um, this agreement and the amount of capacity that we've had this agreement in place for over forty years. And we're still only using about one tenth of that capacity.
You are correct, sir.
Just wanted to highlight that.
I, I, I agree. This is again, one of the problems of the past. What I'm trying to do here though is we can't move forward if we keep living in the past and I'm trying to move us forward. And yes, we need to learn of all those mistakes that we've made there. So we don't make them going forward. My calculations right now, I'm, I've got, I'm seeing about five point two million dollars that we still owe on those, on the our percentage of the bonds for West Warwick. There's about five point two million dollars that we've got.
Right, you, you made the comment that, um, bonds are about to fall off, but we also don't know when the next upgrade is gonna be and how much it's gonna cost us.
No, we don't. And that's, that's one of the issues. You're, you are absolutely correct.
So going forward, it's still gonna be an issue, even though it's a past issue.
It is. That's why, like I said, we are looking at in the attempt to possibly get rid of some of that capacity if, if we can, uh. Again, they, they, decisions were made thirty years ago, forty years ago, and we're, we're living with them and we can't, we can't change it. So we've just gotta move forward and, and, and do the best we can to mitigate the, the effect of, of those bad, bad choices or, or decisions made then. And I wouldn't say it was a bad choice because Senator New England was projected to be a monstrous amount of capacity needed down there. And that project would, went away and everything. It just blew up and, and we never got to the point of where it was supposed to get to. So I mean, that's a big, big issue with why the amount of capacity that we've got on that plant. And remember, that plant was expanded based on our need as well. So I mean, rightfully so, we have a responsibility on that. We can't just walk away from, from what we've done. And all we have.
I, I, I totally hear you and I agree with you, but back in nineteen eighty-one, when that agreement was signed, Senator England wasn't even a thought. And we, we grabbed all of this capacity. So I wanted to.
You are correct. I'm not gonna argue that point with you, sir. All right, anything further?
No, that wasn't.
All right, uh, Mrs. Shockley, I noticed your hand is up.
Yes, thank you. Um, can I just be clear? So West Warwick passes bonds for the, um, sewer to be upgraded. Uh, and then we as a whole town pay on them. Is that correct?
We, the sewer enterprise fund pays on them. We have moved two hundred thousand of that debt over to the general, over to the, to the general fund.
Okay, so that, it's only that small amount that gets paid for by the entire town, the entire population of Coventry.
Correct, two hundred thousand currently under
Okay.
By our, our financial, our bond council, as well as, uh, our fi- financial advisor have both determined that we can move that entire six hundred and seventy thousand in, in, in bond payment or debt payment to West Warwick over to the general fund if
Okay.
council has a desire to do that. Again,
Okay.
taking a little load off and spreading it out to the rest of the town.
Okay, um, just wanted to make sure I understood. Um, another question is, you know, I know that the town of West Warwick doesn't want to change anything in our contract, but have we looked at just trying to fight a bad contract? Like would a judge, um, allow us to change this contract in any way? Because it's just a bad contract for the town of Coventry. Like there are certain instances where a contract is so bad, it's almost, uh, malpractice.
We entered into that contract and requested and require and asked for that amount, that percentage of usage.
I know.
So I mean, as far as we asked for it, we've got what we asked for.
Yep, I, I know.
I mean, if it's possible, but again, I'm not an attorney.
Yeah. No, me neither. I just wasn't sure if we'd looked at, I mean, forty years ago, we've made, seems like we made a bad ask, um, and we have been stuck with it for forty years. So I just wasn't sure if, you know, if a judge looked at the, how that contract was put together. It, it just seems whoever, whoever planned that contract did a poor job. And I know I don't wanna look back in time either, but just to see if we can change it moving forward. Um, and then my only other question was, are there any other services in our town that are just put on individuals? And I, I know the fire department is kind of a by section of town you pay for your fire department. Um, but like the schools are only used by a certain amount of the town, but the whole town pays um, I don't use the senior center, but I pay for the fact that we have one. So are there any other um, services that we're in segment of the town or is the sewer, um, kind of a one-off in that way?
Well, it's, it's a one-off right now. It's, it's, it's an enterprise fund. And as such, it's, it's designed.
I'm gonna be honest with you. I don't know that I know what an enterprise fund is.
It's the, it's the, it's the limited users. It's the same thing if we were looking at a, 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 uh, a dam, what the heck do they call it? A dam, uh, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm losing my mind here right now. Please?
District?
Yeah, damn district. It would be the same kind of thing on that if, if we did Johnson's Pond and we charged a certain amount to the people that are around the pond that are on the pond to use. So it'd be the same type of concept that, that that would be, uh. It's, but it's, it's only the people that are involved in it. And that's the way, that's the way the legislature set it up. That's the way it's not designed to be going out. And I'm pretty sure just about every other community that's, that has it, it's all the same way. It's a separate, it's like a water district. They're the same way. It's, it's, it's only to the users. So the cost of, of giving to just the users.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to understand, you know, why it was kind of a one-off. So thank you.
Thank you. So we have additional, uh, hands up on the attendees. I'd like to bring them in. Lisa, you're, uh, you have another question?
Um, well, I was just gonna. I think I hit my thing by mistake, my hand. Sorry.
Okay, you're all set then?
Yes.
All right. Joshua, you, uh, you have a question?
Sure, thanks, Mr. Wazika. Josh Clements, Tangent Farm Drive. Full disclosure, I'm not affected by any sewer fees, assessments and whatnot, but I have an interest in the improvement of the sewer program for the betterment of the town. Um, I guess, are there any more discussion on the, the benefits and how the sewer system benefits the town, benefits the environment? Uh, obviously we play a large role in the state. Mentioned it before, seventh largest town should have an effective sewer system, uh, and not be as roughshod or mismanaged as it has been in the past. So maybe more focus on the benefits.
Benefits are, are obvious in, in a commercial zone, a, uh, an industrial zone. People aren't gonna wanna, people won't move in if there's, if they're using a, a septic system. They're not gonna build a big box store here when they, if they don't have a, a sewer system to connect into. Industry is the same way. I mean, there's just things that people the costs associated with it are just too large and, and they need, uh, so sewer, sewers have their, their, their use. They have a benefit. The environmental issues are monstrous. We've got all of our lakes and ponds and, and rivers and streams that we've got. Except the old, uh, the old cesspools are, are, are leaking. All of those causing, causing issues and polluting all of our, our waterways. So I mean, there's a, there's a huge benefit to doing it. Unfortunately, it has, it, the whole thing has to be weighed, the cost versus the benefit. And, um, in certain areas, it is definitely worth it, uh, to break sewers out to say the western section at this point would, would there wouldn't be a benefit to it. Then the distance between the connections are so far, it would be a monstrous cost to bring out there. But where we are and where we're trying to put them in, there's, there's definitely a need and definitely a, a, a huge benefit to the town. Ty O' Avenue was where I'd love to see that completed all the way down to the town line. And I've spoken to Mr. LeBite about this. That's an area that needs to be done ASAP. There's a, a lot of property there that could be utilized and I think would get utilized if we had sewers in that, that system. I know, uh, uh, the cigar lounge that opened up recently on, on, uh, on Ty O, that was a very expensive septic system to put in for, to be able to open that place because of what was required because of where the water, the water table and everything else. Extremely expensive. It would have been much better to have a tie-in to, to the sewers if it had been run down there. So yeah, that's, uh, there are areas and we need to, we need to look in that. And again, if we make the decision to move forward, the council and the public, then that's all what's gotta be evaluated and, uh, and, and done.
Any additional? No, I was gonna say, I'm certainly, certainly not advocating for the extension out to western. Um, I mean, maybe when it, when it makes sense, sure. Um, but I definitely would support another bond referendum or, or something that can get a capital fund established to pay for the services and I guess utilities that are required in a, in a growing community such as ours.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you're on.
Good morning, everyone. Um, I was just asked, wanted to ask if those asked to, um, renegotiate the IMA have happened within, within the past year or so. Um, I'm only asking because I know we don't wanna live in the past just because members of the public were met by previous members of the council saying they'll say no, it's not worth our time.
I'm trying to think the last time we, we had a contact with them. It's probably been maybe twelve to eighteen months ago was the last, the last time we, we had a meeting with them directly involving the, 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 um, the capacity issue and trying to get them to reduce. Take that out of that capacity. So it's been twelve to, twelve to eighteen months, twelve to sixteen months in that range.
Okay, I, I think it might be worth trying to look into again, cause as previously stated, if they perform an upgrade, we're on the hook for a lot of money. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you, sir, for your questions. Thank you for listening.
I think the short story on the, uh, capacity issue is we need to find a buyer. We have an agreement, we're stuck with the agreement. We own a certain amount of capacity. We need to find a buyer to, to purchase the leftovers of what we don't want.
And we have been in negotiations on that or, so hopefully that will bear fruit at some point in the near future. Not too distant, that will allow us to get rid of some of that.
And just for the listeners, uh, we do have two point two five million gallons of usage per day that we can send to West Warwick and we're using less than one, or just about one tenth of it.
And we have Mary has another question. Mary, you're back in?
Hi. Did I hear you say that you were going to, you had the capability of charging a minimal sewer usage fee whether you were tied in or not?
No ma'am, no ma'am. That's not what I said. That was one of the recommendations of the attorney general's, uh, review of our system.
All right. And if that did go through, would it be anybody that has a sewer line and, or is it the whole town that's going to have to pay a minimum sewer juice? Or is it just the people that got this, uh, sewer system thrown down their throat? Is it just us or is it gonna be the whole town picking up that tab?
So it would be.
If, if it's benefiting the whole town by having sewers and you're gonna charge us a minimum usage fee, it's not helping the environment because we're still not using it. You're just collecting money. You know what I'm saying? So how is that benefiting? Do you know where I'm coming from? How is that benefiting the environment if we're just paying but not actually using? You know what I'm saying? But you're gonna charge just the people who had this pipe thrown down their throat, but not the whole town? I'm confused by that. So is that something they plan on doing?
Ma'am, it is just a recommendation from the order to general. That's it. That is, it's not, uh, it's again, moving forward, that's something that will be evaluated and determined.
And what would that fee be? Thousands of dollars?
Again, ma'am, we don't, we have no idea at this point. Again, it's gotta be something that would have to be evaluated by the council, by the sewer subcommittee and, uh, ordinance changes made to actually enact that. So that would be, again, it's up to the council. And right now, until they make a decision to move forward, then it's, it's just, just that, a recommendation by the attorney, or order to general.
Okay, well, I just hope they take that into consideration that these poor people, they got this pipe thrown down their throat. Are gonna be forced to pay for the benefit of the whole town, even though it's not gonna benefit anybody because no one's tied in because personally, I can't afford it. So I will, you'll be putting me out of my home because I have Lyme disease and MS and everybody thinks all right, let's just put it on that poor lady. You know what I mean? It's not really fair. So I'm just throwing that up.
Mrs. Dixon?
Uh, one brief comment. Um, I understand fully the cost associated with excess capacity in our contract with West Warwick. And there has been some suggestion here that we should look for a buyer for excess capacity. No decision is an easy one. Because even if you could find a buyer, you'd have to make a decision based on objective data just how much capacity you actually want to sell or get rid of. And you'd have to understand the future growth of the community. So I just want to mention that, um, lots of, lots of potential solutions here. But nothing is going to be easy for the council and it's gonna require a lot of data and analysis in order to make an appropriate decision.
Thank you. Eric?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, so, uh, in regards to the, uh, intermunicipal agreement. Over a year ago, I made a documentation request with West Warwick regarding that intermunicipal agreement. In regards, you know, specific, specifically to the, uh, operational costs, the amount to commentary and, uh, the flow that Coventry sends to West Warwick because it states in that IMA that West Warwick will keep track of that. Now, they, uh, they basically gave me the runaround. And then when I filed the complaint with the attorney general's office, they said that everything was destroyed in the floods. But those floods were in twenty-eleven or whatever day it was, whatever year it was. So basically, if everything was destroyed in the floods, they should have that information from, you know, twenty-twelve or whatever to the present day. They still haven't given me any of those documents that I requested. And there's actually an open, it's public information, but there's a open, uh, case with the attorney general's office against West Warwick in regards to this APRA violation. So if they're not, if they're in violation of the IMA, shouldn't that give this town leverage to to negotiate it? Because clearly, the twenty-five percent that we're spending on upgrades and all the other stuff that we're, all the other money that we're just dumping into their facility. We're paying for twenty-five percent of all those upgrades and everything, but we're nowhere near twenty-five percent of the capacity that they receive.
Yep. I you, you, you've put the request in with them, they haven't get, they haven't provided the documents. They haven't proven, I mean, you have, there's no, they're not in violation of the inter, uh, municipal agreement. They're in violation of not providing you the documents to it.
Yeah, but if, if it turns out that they do not have a record of of just one aspect of what that IMA states, the operational cost, the amount to commentary, the flow that they've received, that they don't have those recorded, isn't that a violation of the agreement? Because it states that West Warwick will maintain records of those things.
No, uh, I, we may have gotten those records at the same time and when they were first produced. I don't know. Again, one of my problems that I'm finding is there was the biggest issue that we're facing here is we have no one leading the sewer enterprise fund. It's, it's broken up with a number of people each having little pieces of it. The di- the data and documents have been broken up and they're in different, different departments and divisions within the town. I've tried to compile a lot of it, um, to, so we have a centralized location on it. And it's something that, again, moving forward, we'll, we'll be doing more of getting all of this. Uh, I will be looking into seeing if we got, we should have gotten all of those documents when the, when the cost would, would, would done, calculated. That's part of what the agreement says and they would have done it. But, uh, where it is here, we'll see what I can, I'll see what I can find on our. But uh, where it is here, we'll see what I can, I'll see what I can find on our.
But what I'm saying, what I'm saying is I did an IMA, I did a APRA, excuse me. With West, through West Warwick.
Yep.
Asking for that information.
Yep.
They refused to give it to me. They just, you know, they completely ignored me. Then once they exceeded the uh, the legal amount of days to give me the information or request an extension. Then they said that uh, it was gonna cost me over eight hundred dollars to get it. In which, you know, then there's a law saying that if they exceed that amount of days. For the APRA, they can't charge you a retrieval fee. So after I sent that to them, then all of a sudden. Uh, you know, it was destroyed in the flood. So like they had excuse after excuse after excuse. But the main reason I asked for that APRA through us work is. It's gonna show the amount of flow that commentary has sent to them or we have sent to us work. And it's gonna show the amount that we've paid, which is, we know twenty five percent. But it's gonna, it's gonna show that we're paying twenty five percent when we're only using. You know, one percent of that twenty five percent over. All the years since nineteen eighty, whatever. So it's gonna show the gross overpayment. That's gonna be the data that's. You know, gonna. Show how grossly commentary is overpaid. For this IMA.
Eric, we're, we're, we're all aware that we, we've overpaid. I mean, that's part of what's going on. We know exactly how much we're sending them every year. We get charged on it. That uh, again, it's a given. We know that uh, that's happened. It's based on that, that volume and there's nothing we can do on, with that.
Wouldn't West Warwick, wouldn't West Warwick be in violation of that IMA if they're not keeping those records? Because I requested those records and they still haven't produced them. And they've also haven't produced them to the Attorney General who requested them.
You're right, but that, your, your issue is with them and whether or not they do or don't have it, I don't know. I have no idea what's going on, what they, what they've done, what they haven't done. We are.
Okay, well, let's, let's say they don't have it or they don't have part of it. Doesn't that put them in violation of the IMA?
Not if they've already provided that data to us. At an earlier point. If they provided the data to us, we've got it. And like I said, we, we will have it. Any of the stuff that's going on in that, we've gotten, we've gotten copies of all of it. So.
Alright. And another thing about, I, I hate bringing up the past, but with the gross mismanagement. That everyone keeps bringing up. Is there any accountability for these? Sewer subcommittee members and town council members from the past that just. Decimated this town financially?
How do you, uh? The things that were done in the past, in most cases were done. So they did what they thought was the right thing and whether it was or not hindsight has proven that some of it wasn't.
Seems like they did what was the easy thing.
Well, I mean, there were sewer, sewer rates that weren't, weren't brought up for, for seven years. We sat with an older rate for seven years that never got, that never got increased. We had assessments that were not based on actual construction cost. They. They, you know, they, 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 they did what they did though for what they thought was best for the town. It wasn't. They didn't, they weren't trying to, to take advantage of the town. They weren't trying to take advantage of the citizens. The decisions they made, they made what they felt was the, the best for us, for the town, for the people. And, and even as far as not charging what needed to be done. Were they political reasons? They were, they weren't charged more than likely. I don't know. We don't know what was in their mind and, and, and why they made those decisions. But I, I don't, I. You, the order, the Order General. When he looked into this whole process, one of the concern, one of the thoughts was that there may have been something done that shouldn't have been done, something illegal. None of that was ever found. It was, there were honest mistakes that may have been made that some people would consider mistakes. But there was no criminal activity that they found. You know, that uh. So yeah, I, I, I disagree with that statement that they. They, they did it because I don't think they did. I think they did what they did for the, for the best interest of our town. And it may have been the wrong thing to do, but I think it was done. Because they, they were concerned, like thirty, thirty five hundred dollars for an assessment was nowhere near what was costing that.
But it's reasonable.
Well, it, not for the cost associated with putting it in, it wasn't. As far as, even as far as some of the abatements that were done. They were done, I, you, they were done, what they thought was best, again, to get a developer in and get the development done. That's not, it's not something illegal, it's just a decision they made.
I never, I never said anything regarding criminality or legality. I was just saying accountability.
Emphasizing that because that, that has come out and people have made those accusations. And they never have and there, there's no, there's nothing there. The people have done what they've done. Out, out of a desire to do the right thing.
Personally.
Anything else, sir?
No, that's it.
Alright, thank you. Okay, we have no one else with a hand up at this point. Would we like to continue on the Order General's report?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay. Where did I leave off? Anybody remember?
Are you on, are you on seven?
We did number, you did number six, you're.
Number seven, reassess the importance of the sewer program to the town's overall growth, economic development and health and safety objectives. Utilize the updated assessments to guide various near term and long term decisions regarding the sewer program. This one is something that, this is, I think, the main piece of what the council needs to do and we work from there. That's what we have to do. It hasn't been done at this point. Again, this is up to, we've got a new council, we've got new people. And uh, one of my goals would be because of. This obviously is gonna be staying with me. As we transition from uh, to the new town manager. I really want to take advantage of our sewer subcommittee. And engage them again, back into the process, the way they haven't been in a number of years and get them involved with. Doing these, doing this base work and, and the analysis and, and coming up with, with. If, if again, the council decides to move forward with this and we make the decision. To advance the system. I want to take advantage of the people that we have and not just uh, use them to get the. Sewer uh, tie-in authorization.
Mr. Rozika.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so. I joined the sewer subcommittee, I think it was in the spring of two thousand eighteen. Um, and I was a little bit new to town back then. Um, but at the time I had just looked into. You know, where, where were areas of town that, that we possibly needed assistance? So when I first joined that committee, I didn't know a whole lot. Um, I had requested from Stephanie in, um, just background on what that sewer subcommittee. Did and I got the, what I'll refer to as the bylaws. Um, I don't know the official term for it on, on what the committee should do. There, there's a whole list of. Of items that, you know, we should be focused on. Rate this, you know, um, uh, more than just tie-ins, for example. Um, and I'd say probably. I don't know, ninety nine percent of what I've done in that committee has been tie-ins. So um, there's certainly. There's certainly some sort of disconnect between. What we said the committee was gonna do, at least on my time. I know that there's members that on that subcommittee that have been there much longer than me. Um, but at least during my time, it feels like. Mostly what we've done is tie-in requests. So I, I certainly agree with the. With the sentiment and the recommendation that we, we need to figure out who's doing what. Um, and I believe you mentioned earlier a comment about. Ownership and I believe it was, I think it was Mr. Wilson who said something about accountability. Um, it's definitely something that we've talked about. Uh, or I have talked about, you know, um, with Mr. Rozika, with Mr. LeBlanc, with Mr. Skirka. Just in terms of having a point of contact who knows all the pieces. Um, so I, I certainly understand where some of these recommendations are, are coming from and I. Um, personally have seen the need um, for this particular recommendation if we decide to go forward to be addressed.
Yep, I agree. The, 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 the big, one, again, one of the many big, big problems I've, I've seen. With this is that lack of a contact person, the lack of a point person to lead. This, get everything together, combine it all, work. As again, finance director, DPW director, uh, tax assessor, uh, tax collector, tax assessor. Stephanie in, I mean, we've got people all over the place, Monique. Karen, they all got a piece of this and then we, we just. There's no central control on it and, and, and that's been part of the problem that we faced over the years. People move on, there's no consistency. We need, we need to get that in. One way or another, that needs to be in place, whether we move the, the program forward and, and start increasing it. Or just maintaining what's on here. It has to be done. We have to engage the sewer subcommittee. One of the problems I've noticed with that, what the charter says their, their, their role is and what the resolution. Says their role is, there's a, there's a big disconnect on that, on the, on the two. I, I, there's a lot of dedicated people on that board. I, I personally want to see them utilized. And their, their knowledge utilized to, to bring this forward. I think sewers are a necessary part of our town. To let it sit and go stagnant, we can't do. We can't just let it fall apart. We have to maintain it. We have a legal liability. We have a liability to pay these, these bonds. We currently have. Principal alone of, of twenty million dollars between the West Warwick East. Of four, five million and our, our bonding at about. Fourteen, that's fifteen million dollars. On town bonds for various uh, construction projects on this. That's principal only, never mind the interest on, on this. So all total, I believe it comes out to almost twenty five million dollars between principal and interest we owe. We've got to pay that. We have an obligation. We've got, we've got some pumping stations that are, that are already exceeding their life expectancy. They're, they're in, we, we just had a review done of one that's indicating it's, it's forty years old. And uh, it should have, it should have been replaced. A pots and, and upgraded twenty years ago. It hasn't been done. There's been no funds to do that. So we've got to do all of these things and we, we've got to take it because if something, something goes amiss. And something breaks down and we start spewing human waste. We are going to have a, a huge problem. So we've got this, it's our liability, it's our town's liability. This is ours. We have to make sure it's maintained. And, and repaired and, and done what needs to be done. The, the best way to do that is to expand it, get more users in. Get people where the, where the cost is shared by more and not just the few. We've got a thousand seventy one bills that we put out right now. That's it. That's how, there's more users than that because several of them have. Mom, multiple, multiple parties involved and I think. Mo, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we got about what, eighteen hundred, thereabouts, individual users into the system. But. Less than eleven hundred bills. We need to expand that out so that cost is distributed to more people. And not to the smaller, small number we have. The benefits, as I said, the industrial, commercial, all of that will, will, will expand. That way, with development going on all over the place. And commercial development going on, we've had very little on Tyo Gab. And I think, I think the biggest piece, problem with that is again, we don't have the ability, they don't have sewers to tie into. So I, I'd like to see all of that corrected. And this all comes in under past problems, current problems. We've got, I'm looking at the numbers. I mean, financially, yes, it's going, it's, it's gonna be tough. We uh, last year's budget, last year's sewer, sewer fund. Uh, the numbers are not finalized yet with the order because it's, that's still in play. But on a cash basis, not an accrual, which we've switched over. We've, we've eliminated that. On a cash basis, we were positive by about fifty four thousand dollars. We were projecting more closer to three hundred thousand dollars last year. We have, we saw the effect of reducing down that interest rate. That was brought down from the, the six percent. Down to the, the adjusted daily floating that we've now got. And that caused about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so in lost revenue. To the town. It's gotta be paid, these bills have to be paid. So when we bring that, a cost down, we still have to find the funds somewhere. To, to maintain and, and pay those bills and pay, pay the bonds. We have an obligation on all of that. So I mean, that's, but we need some.
Mr. Rozika. I, I think on, uh, I think I would just wanna make one clarification though, um. We do want to figure out where we make up a cost, but that doesn't necessarily mean it needs to go on the taxpayer.
I agree. I did say that.
No, I, I agree. I, that's why I just wanted to clarify because um. I think we have, I think we have a lot to discuss from the council once we get through. Um, through this session on how we kind of want to proceed. Um, but I, I, I'm trying to be thoughtful in terms of some of the problems that we're seeing. Um, and certainly the. I don't, I'll just publicly state, I don't want to multiply a problem. Um. By building more lines and getting more people on the system. So um. Maybe what we can do is um. Continue focusing on what are the recommendations and what have we done before we. Keep talking about where we possibly put sewers like on, on Tyo Avenue. So I'll just, I'll just recommend that we. We come back to the problem as opposed to keep talking about where we might put them.
Well, I think Mr. Rozika is trying to get through the recommendation list. So. Mr. Rozika, why don't you continue? I think you've just talked about number seven. Why don't you move on to number eight?
And, and a lot of the, and a lot of these recommendations are all. To if we move forward. A lot of these are not, you know, the ones we've, we've, we've taken care of, the things we fixed. We fixed because they were, they were good for the now. A lot of this is for the future and then we need to. If we move forward, then we need to start, we need, we will implement these. Implement an information program to educate taxpayers on how the sewer program is integral to the long-term growth and viability of the town. Needs to be worked on. Increase the number of uh, system uses customers strategically. By targeting expansion of the system where there is the strongest environmental need. Homeowner interest and a reasonable balance of construction cost to the number of connections users gain. The one of, one of the, and again, that alone talks about that, that section. Briar Point, there's almost three hundred, almost three hundred houses. On the upper and lower section of, of, of Briar, of the Arnold Road line. That sewer pump station that, that needs to be built over there puts a substantial number of people into the system. Uh, again, Tyo Gab, bringing it all the way down. That's, that's the areas where this would be and that we have looked at those and what would work and what. Future expansion beyond that, that's something that has to be uh.
It's gonna.
Thoroughly analyzed. Ensure.
Mr. Rozika.
Yes, sir.
Just, just one comment. Um, I've heard in the past that this section is very interested in sewers and this section is very, you actually made a. I think you made a comment that Briar Point, those residents are very interested. I, I think we just got a, a point of clarification. I, I would like to send out a notice saying estimated costs are X. Tie-in costs are Y. User fees are Z. Are you still interested? I think that needs to happen and then we can say whether or not these residents are really interested. Just wanted to call that out.
Mr. LeBlanc, I think before anything is done. Anywhere, that is, that is something that has to go out to. We need, we need. We need citizen engagement in this. We shouldn't ju, we analyze where they need to go. We look at what, what, what's best environmentally, all of that. And then we also have to have the input from the people that live in that area. Do they want, the majority want it? Do they not want it? We don't force, we can't. Unless there's an, a, a pressing environmental need that, that mandates that we have to put into an area. I, I, I think that the, the citizens should have a, a big say on whether or not that moves into their neighborhood. Again. Short of the environmental issue because there are. I know a lot of, a lot of around Briar Point, there's a lot of septic, a lot of old. Uh. What do you call it? Uh.
Sesspools.
Sesspools and not septic systems over there. There's leaching that goes on. We monitor, we've monitored Lake Tyo. All summer long from the levels and, and we do see, we've had issues in the past. Where those levels have skyrocketed and we've had to shut it down because of that. So we know there was a pressing need in that area. As well as we have had. Substantial number of homeowners ask us, when are we getting it? We need it. Our systems are failing. We don't want to put, we don't want to put a system in if we're gonna get the sewers. We'd rather have the sewers because of the, the, the cost on doing those systems over there. So again, all of that's gonna be looked at. I, I agree completely. We can't go into this haphazard like we, we like. Appears to have been done in the past and it really wasn't, but we need to do more citizen engagement. And I think that's one of the biggest issues we, we face moving this forward. Okay, ensure long-term, uh, near-term and longer-term sewer expansion plans are incorporated into the town's overall planning efforts. Enhance transparency and communication of any sewer system expansion by requiring notification. To affected homeowners at least two years in advance of the. Actual construction schedule to allow that information to be considered by the homeowners contemplating installation of a new. Individual sewer disposal system. So what we, we've spoken about. Uh. Number eleven. Uh, explore options to manage or reduce the high cost of sewer assessments on homeowners. To include review the components included in the total project construction cost allocated to homeowners. Consider eliminating street paving costs, police details and any extraordinary unanticipated construction costs. We eliminated the police paving. Police detail and paving costs from both the Arnold Road and Hazard Street uh, assessments. So they were removed on, on that. Again, moving forward, we would be doing the same thing. We ought to look, again, the ordinance change. Definitely do, uh, to lock it in, but I think the ordinance, our sewer ordinance needs to be attacked as a whole and not done piecemeal. To do a minor change here and there isn't the answer to what we need to do. Again, if we're gonna move forward, we have to analyze that, that whole ordinance. come up with the, with with the corrections that need to be done and then move that forward. Again, this is where the sewer subcommittee will have a huge part of of developing that. So at least how I envision it. Be taking your lead though.
Mr. Wazika.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I just wanna be conscious that we some of us may feel slightly differently. Um, so I'll give you an example. I don't think that we need to do this massive review of an ordinance every time. If there's something that we know is clearly not working or if there's something that we know should be changed, we should be able to bring that forward as an ordinance change. So um in, in my opinion, uh, if we decide that we're moving forward, I wouldn't wanna just limit us to one-time ordinance review. If there's things over time that we find, I would be interested in bringing that forward. And we can certainly continue that conversation after um, you know, we start the solution discussions.
Oh, I agree. Uh, the thing is that there are a lot of changes that we already know need to be done. I'd rather do them as a group. We can save our cost associated with with advertising, mailings, or anything that we've got to do on it. We can save that cost by doing a single upgrade of the of the whole ordinance. And then as new issues develop, we do those on an as-needed basis. But I think because of the fact that we know that we are facing a number of, of back issues and problems with the ordinance that need to be changed, this first initial should be done to include all of them and save as much money as we can and not put it out one at a time. That's why I was suggesting that. But we, we always, you know, the need for any change down the, down the road should be addressed as it comes up. I agree completely. Okay, explore options to manage or reduce the high cost of sewer uh assessment on homeowners to include subsidizing the sewer assessment by recovering a portion of those costs from sewer use charges or directly subsidized for a portion of the costs from the town's general fund or other non-sewer fund source. We've, we've done that. Uh, we instituted the Waterman Fisk Assistance Program in utilizing funds from there with a program that uh John Arnett spent a lot of time on and coming up with. And we, we've assisted, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head. Mo, do you remember how many people between uh Hazard Street and Arnold Road that we assisted with that? Mo? No, all right. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. I should have prepped on have.
No, I'm good. I'm gonna say at least, I'm gonna say at least six. Cause I know from the first round, it, I know I just did one. And I know from the first round, I I wanna say like five.
Okay.
There could, there could be a couple of more, but I know it's, it's, it was a good amount.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Everyone that was eligible, we sent letters out to, we did, we made and uh made sure that everybody is aware of all of that, that assistance that was available through there. So we have, is it enough? I'd like to see more. And again, moving forward, that's something that we can all discuss. You can discuss. Explore options to manage and reduce the high cost of sewer assessments on homeowners to include reducing the interest rate uh charged on sewer assessments to approximate the town's actual cost to borrow. Again, an, an issue that we have resolved, uh partially through us, partially through uh state uh change. But we have instituted that where we are point five percent over our actual cost. And because of the fact that our bonds are all different, different interest rates, we use a formula to calculate the average interest rate and then the five, the point five percent over that.
Wazika, uh, Mr. Clements uh from the public does have his hand up. Just wanna call that out.
All right, excellent. Thank you, sir. Joshua, we got you back into the meeting.
Oh, I, I, I could have waited. Um, I just, I just wanted to again highlight, right, the sewer system will benefit the town as a whole. I think you highlighted a well ed, right? Commercial development. If we increase commercial development, we increase growth in targeted areas of the community, then it could reduce the tax burden across the town uh theoretically. And it would benefit the greater community. I think echoing some of the concerns of the Johnson's Pond community, right? The pond is beneficial to the, the greater majority of the town, even though a few people are paying cost in terms of property taxes, et cetera.
Thank you very much. Okay. Explore options to manage or reduce the high cost of sewer assessment on homeowners to include increase the availability and awareness of lower-cost financing options for homeowners. That uh our, our interest rate on that, I mean uh I'd have, I'd have an issue with anybody doing anything other than doing the way we do it because if you go out and you take out some type of private financing to pay off that assessment, that assessment, as we spoke about earlier, stays with the house until it's fully paid off. So if someone were to go out and they, and you, they took a homeowner's loan at at two and a half percent, substantially lower than what our interest rate is. But you're gonna pay off that assessment. You sell your house, you're gonna pay off that entire amount of loan that you borrowed to pay the assessment. So I don't, I don't, I don't believe that that's a fiscally uh proper thing to do. Again, anybody, people can do whatever they need to do or they want to do. But if you, but if you're going to be selling, the possibility of selling your house, you, you don't wanna pay off that assessment if you're gonna be selling and somebody else is gonna, gonna be picking it up. If you pay it off and you sell, you've lost the whole cost of that assessment. So it, it, again, it's doable. There are other, there are other options. And if you're gonna be long-term in your house and you know you're not going anywhere, the, the other solutions maybe, and that's something we may, we could uh work on uh on working with citizens as we get to new people into the system if we so move forward. Uh, explore options to manage and reduce the high cost of sewer assessment uh on homeowners to include adopting a maximum sewer assessment amount. Again, if we move forward, I think this is something that we should look into on doing that. We have not.
On that, on that point right there, uh, Mr. Wazika, the only thing I, I wanna call out is we have Hazard Street, which as you know, is the most expensive sewer pro uh program or project in town that just happened. But a street over, a developer is uh building a new building and the sewer assessment that he's going to get charged is about a third per uh the price per bedroom than what Hazard just got charged. So when this suggestion is being made, I'm just, I just wanna clarify, do you envision that regardless of what the uh sewer assessments were when the sewer went into those other streets? Cause as you know, as you, when you began this meeting, you said that they were just kind of pulled out of a hat. They weren't based off of actual construction. Cause giving that developer the chance to connect at such a low rate, it's just prolonging our issues. I don't know if you would agree or disagree.
Sir, I agree completely with that. Part, again, part of the, part of an ordinance change that that would be needed is that we set a rate that's the, if, if our maximum assessment rate is X and we put in new, we put in new people, do we wanna hit them with that whole thing? Maybe not, but I do believe they shouldn't be getting the benefit of a, of a thirty-five hundred or a sixty-six hundred dollar assessment if they're, they're coming in now, especially with, if you look at just to give, throw some numbers out there, uh, we, we have eight point nine million dollars of uncollected assessments at this point. What we've got left on, on the, on the assessments that have been issued. We've already closed out most, six hundred assessments are no longer on the books. They've been fully paid.
Yeah, it's.
Six hundred. So we owe fifteen million dollars in bonds to, to our construction. And we're gonna collect eight point nine million dollars in, in assessments that are left on the books. That number's not gonna work.
So how's the difference gonna get paid then?
That's, again, that cost is gonna all be bore by the uh, the, the, the rate payers and the, and the, on the system. Because again, the assessments and, and the, the assessments and the user fees all go in and they use to pay off the op, the operating costs for the, for the year on, on those costs. So it's not, the assessments are collected and not earmarked to pay, pay, pay the bonds. It's, it's all, all put into, into the fund to pay all of the, to pay. So at some point, we will not be collecting the assessments. And again, the tool that we have had developed on uh, on, on managing the uh, the cost will, those rates will, would have to go up. And that's why I agree completely that moving forward at any of these, cause we've got some, we've got some very big projects or potential for some big projects coming in. And some of those, some of those sewer, sewer assessments are already locked in where we've got, where we've got no cost to the town or had no cost aside from the West Warwick and all that. But I mean, as far as construction cost. So those, those numbers will be coming in and also being able to be used to pay off, pay off the uh, the, the bond indebtedness that we have. Uh, if we ever have a, a project that goes in and we get a substantial amount of money from a single uh developer and we get it at, at, at a one time, I, I would love to be able to utilize that to pay off the higher interest bonds. If we have enough funds coming in, utilize that. Don't just dump it into the account. Pay off the highest bond. Let's re, we can bring the rate down as well as get some of that debt off of our, off of our workload. So not to use it piecemeal, uh, you know, and, and, and just let it sit there. I'd rather take advantage to help reduce those costs.
I think that's a great suggestion. You, you did make the comment that on a cash basis, we're in the black, I think fifty-four thousand. But with what you just said, where the assessments are eight point nine and the costs are fifteen, we cannot be in the black on a, on a cruel basis. Not even close.
No, we're not. We're not on a cruel basis. I said cash, why, like, I said cash.
Thanks.
We, we've got, yeah, we're, and again, it's gonna move forward on that until we, we can get this all under control. And again, more reason why I say we, we can't just sit and let it go stagnant. If we do, again, your choices. But without new users, it's, these heavy costs are gonna just keep increasing and increasing on the limited number of users that we, we do have. So that is something that you got, that the councils, your, yours as well as future will have to deal with on this.
Mr. Wazika, it's, uh, thank you. It's, it's twelve oh four. Um, I, uh, maybe you could just very quickly go through the rest of these. You're in the middle of uh number eleven and there are eighteen items that you could just sort of go through these as quickly as possible. Um, and then we still wanna have, we still need to have a public comment at the end of this meeting.
Well, I, okay, number twelve, engage a, engage a firm to perform a, a formal sewer use rate study. We did that. Raftalus is what we utilize. They've given us some, a fantastic tool for, for doing it. Uh, they recalculated the rate with that system to, for this current year. So we, we've, we've taken care of that recommendation and suggestion. Develop an annual operating plan budget for the sewer fund, which includes cash flow and capital budgets as well. The annual sewer operating plan should be adopted formally by the council. We've done that. That's all part of the Rafta, Raftalus program that we, that we engage them to, to perform for. So we've done the, that. Evaluate the need for additional finance and administrative staff for the operations of the town sewer program. One of my, again, we need to, we need to get ownership of this. We need to get the bodies in place and not just rely on our current finance department and DPW and everything else to work little pieces of this. They need to, we need to have the, have staff if we move, again, if we move forward. Utilize a separate bank account established for the town sewer enterprise fund. We, we have separated at one point, these funds were all co-mingled. That has all been done. We've separated the uh, the funds. It has its own accounting. Acquire and enhance computer application, uh, application to facilitate tracking and billing of sewer assessments. We have, we have the assessments. We have a, a system in place. All of that. We are upgrading our tax assessor, tax collector package shortly. And uh, Mo, I believe there will also be upgrading the uh, the, that, that model as well, correct? You just muted yourself.
I said, I'm hoping. They, they did say they were gonna do that after they took care of the assessor and collector, but they haven't given me a date.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Uh, enhance controls to ensure that development of the sewer use charges, including and consider all the various components of course. Uh, again, Raftalus has allowed us to do, to do that. That program is uh quite extensive. They've done a nice job on it. Um, and it's, it's individualized for us. We can project out our costs going out fifteen, twenty years. It gives us the ability to see where we're moving towards our debt versus our income and, and it's a real, real nice application that they've developed. Create a study group to explore and assess the feasibility of fully regionalizing the West Warwick Regional Waste Water Treatment Facility, including repres, representation from all municipal municipalities using the treatment plant. Again, one of the options on, depending on how you move forward. So that's the eighteen recommendations. As you can see, we've, we've uh utilized and, and, and met a, a number of them and others that we haven't because until we make a decision to move forward, there really isn't anything we can do or, or no, no, there's no sense spinning our wheels until we've decided to move forward. And then we need those, those changes. So that's the eighteen, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to open up to public comment. Is there anyone who would like from the members of the public to add additional comments at this time?
We have no one. Uh, if anyone would like to have any, ask any additional questions, please raise your hands. We'll bring you in and uh we will try to uh provide an answer for you. Seeing none, ma'am.
Okay. Are the members of the council have any additional question? Oh, I see Mr. Clement's name up, his hand up. Mr. Clements.
Joshua, you're in again.
Yep. Hey, sorry. Just another quick question on, on usage, right? We're, we're trying to install or expand this sewer program ostensibly, maybe in the future, depends on, you know, the, the vote of the council and, and what people in the districts think. But how does Coventry compare? And I'm, I'm not looking for an answer today, but maybe in the future in terms of residency, uh, density and access to sewer systems compared to some of our other, uh, we'll say communities in Rhode Island. Uh, are we ahead, behind, lagging? Uh, and then maybe some of the environmental indicators that are associated with sewer programs in general. Uh, again, not looking for an answer today unless, unless it's well-known. Thank you. Appreciate the transparency of the town council and the, the sewer subcommittee uh for this program and the challenges the town.
Thank you.
Okay. Would any member of the council like to add any final comments?
We have, uh, we have one more, uh, ma'am.
Oh, uh, Ms. Lima.
Hillary, you're in. Please uh go with your question.
Hey, good morning. Uh, thank you for the session today. So um, you know, hearing the recommendations, hearing the history of the program. Um, I think it's pretty daunting to keep just thinking, well, we have to address this. We have to take next steps. What is the next step? Um, who's dictating what that next step is? What's consi, what's the consensus of what the next step is to make decisions at a broader level? Um, you know, otherwise it just seems like it's another thing where you just keep saying we have to, we have to address.
Mr. Wazika, I'd be happy to address that question.
You may take it, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for your question. We don't wanna lose momentum. Uh, we've started the momentum today. We will continue it. Uh, this workshop is not for actions or votes. So the next steps are not going to be determined at this session. However, Mr. Wazika, as our administrative officer, starting April fifth, uh, he has already been tasked by the council to work on a sewer plan. So at a meet, a meeting, I would say, so suggest April twelfth or the twenty-sixth, which we are second meeting in April. Uh, the town council will then specifically identify the tasks that we're going to ask him to work on so that we may move to some type of uh logical decision about what we do with the sewer program. So we will be collecting some information so that we can make decisions. That information will be coming from Mr. Wazika as a point person. And that discussion will take place at one of the first or the second meetings in April. Does that answer your question, Hillary?
Yes, it does. Um, just trying to figure out timing and I, I, I'm not trying to sound self-serving, but it's just as someone who's gonna be representing or anticipated to represent District Four, which includes a large portion of this program, you know, I just wanna make sure those people have a voice and, and have representation. So not all of the decisions are being made prior to, to May. Um, so that's just trying to figure out how, you know, what next steps look like and um, and, and.
Yeah.
Uh, that feels appropriate. That feels reasonable and appropriate.
The, the members of the community always have an opportunity for public comment at every single one of our meetings. Uh, they also know that they can contact me or any member of the council if they have any questions. Um, so uh, those people have already been contacting me in that district. So they, I believe are as representative as we can do as long as we have this information. So I've been fielding questions uh constantly throughout this whole uh term since Mr. Cody did resign. Um, but certainly we will be moving forward and please encourage any members that you meet on the campaign trail to get on. To get on public comment and contact any one of us. Um, Mr. LeBlanc, you have a question?
Uh, uh, just a comment, um, and then a question. Uh, first I want to just, uh, say thank you, uh, to both, uh, President Dixon and Mr. Wazika for allowing this session today. I think it's a, a great first step in trying to uh, come up with a solution, because the solu- solutions are necessary. Um, I, I, just, my question is. Do we have a standard operating procedure when it comes to sewer assessments and sewer tie-ins? Like, and the reason why I'm asking, because I just feel as though for the town council to approve a sewer, a sewer tie-in. Before any assessment is discussed, known or anything, is just putting the, the carriage before the horse. So I just didn't know if we had a formal procedure, Mr. Wazika, and when that assessment should actually be discussed.
That, every, every property, the, the assessment is known on what the prop, on what the assessment is going to be. We, uh, we have a process. I, Mo, would you like to jump in here and just explain how you do it when you've got new ones coming in?
Sure. Um, basically. In the case of, I'll, I'll go with betterments. When a developer will contact me and ask what the assessment is going to be. I will tell them. And if I know a house is going to have a CO. I'll put a deferment right on the sewer program so that it's visible on any municipal lien certificates. If a homeowner calls me and asks, says the line is like possibly going to go by, what are they gonna? See as far as an assessment, I can tell them based on the last contract, what they're looking at. Um, in the case of assessments that you don't see. There are certain reasons why an assessment will not be done at that point. Part of it could be because it's on a piece of property that does have an assessment and until. The additional building is tied in, there's no change in use. So there is no assessment until we know what the change in use is going to be. It could be because a parcel is not supposed to be assessed yet because it's not part of a certain project. And it's now becoming part of that project. So it will be assessed once it has the ability to tie in. Um, I will always give. Anybody that calls a projected assessment. It will not be an exact assessment because we don't know until. They let us know what the gallons per day is going to be or until I know how many bedrooms there are. Um. I, I don't know what else you want to know.
Uh, no, thank you for that explanation. I just, um. As a ca- town council member. I just feel as though the, the town council should know what the assessment is before approving a sewer tie-in. And the reason why I say that is because on, on a road and on Hazard Street, when the construction was completed. We, the town council actually approved all the sewer assessments and then allowed sewer tie-ins. So I just, I want to make sure. That we have a proper procedure in place. That's.
If there has, if there is something that you want to know. You can certainly contact me and let me know that an assessment is not on a property. And I will explain to you why it is not and what the assessment is going to be in advance.
That would be great. Thank you.
Jamie, any, Mr. LeBlanc, any known assessments from now on on tie-ins? We will throw that number on top of the paperwork just so the council can see. And in a lot of cases, they've already been paying the assessment for you. Uh, like we had one on Sandy Bottom, he'd been paying for years and years. And so, but we will throw that number on there so you're aware of, uh, moving forward. We will do.
Thank you, Mr. Wazika.
Mr. Wazika, can I also put a request in, uh, because this is a short-term item? And I'd also like to know what the capacity on the line is. So when, for example, we go to approve an item. How, how do we make sure that we're approving? A proper tie-in on that particular line? Conceptually, we probably have the capacity based on everything we've talked about. But in the past, I've asked, you know, how, how do we know what I'm, I, I don't want to approve something and then find out later. Jen, you shouldn't have done that because that line is at capacity. I just want to avoid a situation like that.
Glenn, correct me if I'm wrong, sir. Is it, that, those capacities of the lines have already been calculated to, to assume full connections. Am I right?
Yes. So every application for a tie-in that comes through goes through the review process of West Warwick and Coventry. So our engineer will review it. He will give us his opinion at the meeting. Wes Warwick will review it and they will give us a written opinion of, of their comments. So we never even review a tie-in until we have comments from both the town of Coventry and the town of West Warwick.
And so I'm on the sewer subcommittee and I, I see that piece of paper that says, you know, Wes Warwick signed off. And I, I'm in the meeting and I hear Bruce say, yes, I've been through this. But when I ask the individual question, it doesn't seem to get answered. So, um, along those lines, I'm not alleging that it's not being done. I'm simply asking. Was this checked? What, what's the number? Do we have capacity? So maybe what we can do is if there's other questions like that, that maybe councilperson, uh, Shockley or even, um. Uh, President Dixon have, we can collaborate together and provide some of those in the next session that we provide the next steps and tasks to Mr. Wazika.
So, I can tell you that. I think the specific number that you're looking for, for each tie-in is a very complicated number to get. So if you want to know the capacity of, say, the main that any particular tie-in is connecting to. It's, it's moderately easy to figure out the capacity at the end of that main. Based on the size of the pipe, because there, the capacity is based on the size of the pipe. However, the capacity anywhere in the middle of the pipe. Depends upon the capacity of the pipe coming from the building. In addition to all the upstream components that are discharging at the same time.
Yes, and I think that goes to the, um, the overall program ownership. And that we should be able to prove who is looking at that. And that's what I'm more concerned about than the individual to the number. You know, um, complex number. So what I'm looking for is as I'm approving this ultimate tie-in. Was the proper procedure done? And if the answer is yes, that's fine. I'd like to know what, what that was, what that looked like as I go to then approve. And I, I understand this is a complex process, but I think part of the reason we're getting together today is to kind of. Break those pieces apart and understand what is it that we should be looking at when we go to make these decisions.
Where, where the issue comes in, again, because all of the properties on those lines. The calculations were all done during the design phase and they're built to handle all of that. Where we have an issue is if we're going to put a new project in. That's going to require a substantial amount. And I'm going to bring Kevin, Kevin McGee in because we've just had an issue where we've had a review done of Kevin. Are you, are you still there? You fall asleep. Thank you, sir.
There we go.
Good. Thank you. Why don't you just go over what the, the recent review of the capacity of, uh. What we just had, had checked for potential development.
Yeah, we had, uh, Weston and Sampson doing a capacity check on a line. Coming down Titan Avenue. And they were able to find out through their calculations that the amount of units being utilized with the existing. Line could theoretically handle it. Keep in mind that. The effluent is not all going to come at the same time. So the capacity of the line is staged or dosed in a dosing chamber is based upon. Depending on where the pump station may be located. So it's. Ninety-nine point nine percent, you are never going to have everybody discharging at the same time. So the capacity of the pipe is going to fluctuate depending on when those flows will be happening.
And we, I can understand, um, fluctuation and, uh, for the most part, I understand the complexities at this point. Um, I am not a construction person, but maybe if you're, if what you're telling me is this is too complicated for a town council member to understand. Like myself, then maybe we need a new owner. So, um, I, I'm just going to throw that out there. I, I hear a couple of people saying this is very complex. And so what I'm saying is, as someone who's approving the line, these are the types of things that I'd like to be informed of as I'm approving that.
What, what, please understand that my question, my answer was based upon the current application that was just made. No implication of anything about what a town council person should have or not have as far as information.
Yes, thank you, Director McGee.
Thank you. The reason I brought Kevin in on this, uh, Ms. Ludwig, was to demonstrate that we are doing, we. We have any questions at all on whether or not there is capacity available on a line or anything, we'll, we'll have it done before to make sure that we. There is, we, that's the last thing we're going to do is put something on that we can't handle and then. Uh, have it, no, no pun intended, blow up in our faces. So we, uh, we do all of that. Uh, as part of the, part of the due diligence on any of these that come forward. So if they're, if they're hitting the council's purview, then we have done, and it, it's always done, and it's reviewed by. Uh, the sewer subcommittee, uh, as well. And so they are, they, we are doing it. But, uh, moving forward, again, the changes and on what you receive in council, we can, uh, we can always look at what we, what we'll do better. And give you more information to your.
Thank you.
And as we mentioned before, we will be having agenda items. We will continue the discussion. I believe that there will be more than a couple more sessions. There probably might be six or eight more sessions, maybe more. Uh, to determine the future of the program, but in order to determine the future of the program, we're going to be collecting a lot of data. And then it's at that point the council can make determinations about what kind of data it needs in order to make informed decisions. So thank you for your questions, um, Ms. Ludwig, uh, Mr. Shockley and Mr. LeBlanc. Um, all members of the public who participated today, thank you so much. Mr. Wazika, thank you for your very thorough, in-depth, uh, discussion about, um, the history of the program. Uh, some of the ideas about the future of the program and where we are in re- in relationship to the recommendations that we received from the audited generals report, which was March two thousand nineteen. I also want to thank Ms. Mills for being with us today. Um, also Ms. In, um, Mrs. Tool, thank you so much. You provided a lot of value-added information, as did Mr. Circa. Thank you so much for participating, uh, this evening or this. I keep on thinking it's this evening. We still have a long day to go. Um, and also thank you to Mr. LeBlanc, who suggested that we have some Saturday sessions so that we could attract more people. Um, we didn't attract as many people, but I always felt quantity is not necessarily as important as quality. And we got some very good questions from the public and I'm sure that as we move forward, we'll, we'll be gaining an enthusiastic, um, audience. So thank you so much. Now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. Any discussion about adjournment? Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Um, raise your hand if you approve the motion to adjourn. One, two, three.
My hands up.
Thank you. Four. Foyers, no nays. Thank you, everyone. Have a delightful Saturday afternoon and evening. It's a beautiful day.
Glenn, Kevin, Monique, Steph. Uh, Lisa, thank you all for, uh, for giving up your Saturday today. I appreciate it. And, uh, no, there will be no overtime. Sorry, but, uh, thank you for, uh, being here.
Uh, the, the pizza will come in an hour. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye now.